Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I want to welcome Ivory Gomez, our student board member from Browning High School tonight, and ask her to lead us in the pledge, please.
The right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, invincible, with liberty as our strong.
Good evening. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to speak, if you wish to ask questions, please ask them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or staff. The board has been meeting in closed session today regarding matters listed on today's closed-session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. We'll start with number seven, call for agenda items. Items for separate action adoption of the agenda as posted.
Move to approve.
Send.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes five zero zero. And we already introduced Ivory Gomez of Browning High, but I will officially welcome you as our student board member tonight and would love to hear what's happening in your neck of the woods.
Of course. Thank you for having me here tonight. Good evening, distinguished members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Baker, executive staff, and all of the guests here tonight. I am Ivory Alyssa Gomez, a 12th grade ASB Vice President, Representative from Browning High School. Things have been changing rapidly at Browning. Dr. Romat has done a tremendous job for us students, and we are very proud for what she has done for us. As many of you know, Browning focuses on early college. This is an opportunity for students at our school to take college courses on our campus in efforts to gain their associate's degree from LBCC while in high school. We are happy to announce that we had an 80% average passing rate for students in ninth and 10th grade last semester who were enrolled in early college. Currently on our campus, we are offering 11 college-level classes for grades nine through 11. Last year, our school alongside Soto McBride, Polly Powell, and Reed came together and participated in an intramural basketball and soccer league. We all came together every Friday night to watch our teams play. Our school won the championship for basketball, and I have to say, our school's pride and culture went right through the roof. Not only did everyone come together to cheer on our team, but many students made new friends and even supported each other. As a result, we will continue to have intramural sports and plan on adding volleyball as well. Browning will continue to participate in cooking competition for C-CAP, Careers Through Culinary Arts Program. The finalists will compete around March against other student chefs to see if they can win a full scholarship to culinary school. We have a lot in store for us this year. I'm planning on making this, we are planning on making this the best year yet. We would like to thank the board and Superintendent Baker for all of your hard work and support during this year. And Dr. Romat for helping us find our Bison spirit. Thank you, and go Bisons!
We always love having our students here. Colleagues, do you have any questions, comments for Ivory or anything happening at Browning?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned some type of culinary competition. I imagine you need judges or somebody to help eat the food. We can't let the food go to waste, so, you know, keep us in mind, mostly me, but, you know, us. And then also, we generally like to ask about your plans for next year.
Of course. Next year, we plan on also continuing to carry on with the C-CAP competitions for students in our culinary program as well, and continue on having prom and winter formal, which is one of our students' favorite activities.
And did you mention your senior?
Yes.
And so how about you personally? As far as what schools you're looking at?
After high school, I'm planning on applying and going to LBCC and taking on the two free years that are being offered.
Love that college promise. Well, we are grateful for you being here. We understand it's a Monday, which is unusual for all of us, so if you have work to do or things you need to do. Oh, is there anybody, did you bring anybody with you tonight?
Yes, I brought my mother.
Why don't you introduce her, please?
This is my mother in the back with the red shirt.
Well, thank you for raising such an amazing child here, and we're grateful that she got to come out with us tonight. So I think James is telling me we'd like to take a picture with you before you go, if that's okay?
Of course.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item nine. We have three public hearings tonight. Our first public hearing is the initial bargaining proposals from the California Schools Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit A, to the Long Beach Unified School District. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to that item? Okay. The second one, initial bargaining proposals from the California Schools Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit B, to the Long Beach Unified School District. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to that item? Okay, and our third item, initial bargaining proposals from the Long Beach Unified School District to the California Schools Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit A and B. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to that? Seeing none, I declare that hearing, those hearings closed. So, recognitions and acknowledgements. Dr. Baker, I'm going to kick it to you.
Thank you. So we are in for an absolute treat tonight, as you get to meet Lee Underwood and his family, who has been named Teacher of the Year. And so with that in mind, Ryan Ung is going to come and kick off our celebration of Lee as a teacher in Long Beach Unified and his recognition as Teacher of the Year.
Okay. Good evening, President Kerr, board members, Dr. Baker, Superintendent, and Executive Staff. My name is Ryan Ung. I am in OCIPD, Teacher Development Coordinator, and also Teacher of the Year Coordinator. This evening, we're here because we get to celebrate the great accomplishment of our 2023 Long Beach Unified School District Teacher Year, Mr. Lee Underwood from Milliken High School. I want to share a little bit about the process, the extensive process that Lee had to go through in order to be named the Teacher of the Year. The Long Beach Unified School District process is rigorous, and it's aligned to the Los Angeles County Competition. All of our candidates have to be nominated by either a teacher, a peer, an administrator, or a community member in order to be a candidate in the process. Once they're nominated, they have to go through a very extensive, comprehensive process of submitting multiple SAS that highlight many components of their profession. They have to submit SAS to show their compelling classroom practices, their professional accomplishments, and their work inside and outside of the classroom with students, parents, and the community as a whole. So after the application, after the nomination, the Teacher of the Year is then vetted through a really rigorous process to determine by his fellow colleagues, former Teacher Year winners, to look at and score and review his application in order to be selected. So what I want to do now is honor Lee Underwood by showing just a quick video of all his accomplishments, so if we can just show the video.
My name is Lee Underwood, teacher at Milliken High School. It was a surprise for me when I was nominated, but I also felt that with the nomination, it was a really good chance to talk about the value of teachers and to use the voice that I was given, the platform, to advocate for not just myself, but for all teachers, especially in a time when teachers need to be advocated for and make us visible in a way that sometimes we feel we're not. Classroom is kind of a microcosm for the larger world, so when a student sees a teacher who is passionate and has found their passion for something and loves to teach, I think shows that the students themselves can also find that passion. I think a lot of that just starts and is cultivated in the classroom, and in particular, the English classroom, which I find is extremely important. At its core, Milliken has always remained a home for me and kind of a rock for Long Beach Unified, and has always been able to provide experiences and extracurricular experiences that are really unique, and I love that about this school, especially in a time when things are so chaotic. It is a gift, it's an awesome opportunity, and it's absolutely vital a teacher finds that ability and passes it along.
All right, so we would love Mr. Underwood to come up. We don't get to do this very often, but we would love for you to come around and let us shake your hand and take a picture with you. Oh, does Mr. Ung want to do that first?
No, you can do that.
So we'll do that, and then we'll have you go back, if that's okay.
So to honor Mr. Underwood properly, we want to present him with a beautiful canvas portrait that will be displayed right here at the board building at the foyer on the main floor. So anyone who comes to our building will recognize the dedication and talent that we have, and he's an exemplar of what we have widely in our district, but it's a good reminder for everyone. So I'm going to present this to you and have you say a few words, but I just want to show you the canvas portrait, but you're going to have to give it back to me because I have to put that.
There you go, sir.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, wow. The podium's yours.
Is this the picture on the website?
If you haven't recognized the pictures yet, it's on the website.
The podium is yours. We'll take it. Yay.
Thank you so much, all of you, for the recognition. I want to take this opportunity to say how much of an immense honor this is, and it's one I share with every student that walks through my door that I'm lucky enough to be able to teach, the colleagues who inspire me every day, the teachers and mentors who have guided me, my family who have supported me through the triumphs and the breakdowns and the paper grading and all of that. I'm also indebted to my intellectual sparring partners, who are unafraid to challenge me courageously and think alongside me as we make our way through this career that I just absolutely adore and love. And they know who they are, my friends who have been with me through all of that. I want to take a moment to thank you all, the district leadership, and the board of board members, and who continued the legacy of celebrating teachers for the work that they do with their students in the classrooms through this Teacher of the Year process. It's really phenomenal. I know there's teachers right now who have committed full force to the craft and are transforming the lives of students in ways that are profound, but also resist any sort of traditional system of measurement. I think we know in this room full of teachers that sometimes the thing that can lead a child onto a successful life path can be as simple as noticing their subtle cues of distress on a bad day, or a glowing piece of feedback on a paper, fist bump in the hallway, or a note of appreciation just for being in your class, or being present and attentive for a child to talk through whatever's on their mind during your 30-minute lunch break. Those are the teachers who also deserve this award as well, because the truth is, is that we educate humans, and that can be a pretty messy thing at times. But I find that the best place to facilitate the education of young adults in the beautiful process of discovering their humanity is in the humanities classroom. Life is chaotic, it's confusing, and young people have a natural impulse towards seeking out answers about what is worth caring about and what meaning there is in life, and how they should go about being good people and sharing their potential in the right way. And the humanities classroom, helmed by a passionate and incapable teacher, can provide a safe and intellectually complex space to experience the world and other minds within it through the close reading of the world's literature, to explore the big questions about life, identity, and existence through the discussion of various philosophical systems, and to join the ancient and ongoing conversation about who we are and how the world got to be the way it is through the examination of history and a diverse range of historical texts. So I'd also like to take this opportunity to say that I'm hopeful that, in addition to preparing our young adults for a career pathway, we also see an increasingly important role in preparing our young adults for their life pathway. As a teacher of AP Literature, I have had the honor of seeing the transformative impact a deep and careful reading of literature can have on young adults on the cusp of the rest of their lives, because I was one of those students. I see this honor as a sign that in an era when the humanities are losing a bit of steam, some of the most important moments in a young adult's life can and do happen precisely in a humanities classroom. So it's an immense honor to receive this award, and I look forward to representing the good work of all teachers everywhere, and I thank you all very much for your time and support. Thank you.
I said to my colleagues, I'm ready to adjourn the meeting now. Thank you so much for singing the song of education to us tonight. I have a kid who's, well, they're taking pictures, a kid who was transformed by an English teacher. So we know that the humanities are critical in the ways that you said more beautifully than the rest of us could have. I will open up to my colleagues in case they have anything they'd like to say or add. Anyone? I know you're a Milliken mama.
Yes, I'm a former Milliken mom, and Milliken is in the 5th District. And I would just like to thank you for representing your profession so well. And as our Madam President said, you spoke the words so beautifully and represented teachers so well. And I think that's one of the messages from that banquet that Laco hosted was the teachers are great representatives of not just their profession, but the whole education world. One of the things that stuck with me is one of the teachers said that she thought she was going to be a certain kind of teacher, but it turns out that she needed to be the kind of teacher that her kids needed her to be, not who she thought she was going to be. And it just shows that being a teacher means that you're always evolving, that you're always adapting to what the students need, and truly, you've done that. So, thank you.
Dr. Benitez.
Yes, so I love the humanities, as you do, and oftentimes, we absolutely think about, and I agree with it, how many students we need to go into STEM fields, particularly students that have not historically had opportunities to do that. But the humanities keeps telling us the why it's important for students to go into STEM fields and what they're using that education for. So thank you for being a champion of the humanities as well.
Mr. Miller.
Congratulations again. As I was doing my, I'll say my diastrol, right, and I go say hello and thank you to everybody, I was sharing an anecdote with you earlier about a teacher. That teacher that I was sharing this story about actually won Teacher of the Year that year. And when I think of teachers, they're miracle workers. They have the power to influence a generation, they have the power to excite, and when you are teaching those classes, you are yielding that power. And so when I was sharing my story, that teacher, who I won't name, but he was very much an influential piece to me, and I can imagine that you are doing the same for these young people. So, once again, congratulations.
Mr. Otto.
Well, I want to extend my congratulations as well. As I whispered to you as you came up here, I'm also a former Ram, and remember my days at Milliken High School and my English professors in particular, particularly fondly. And it's amazing to me what teachers do for the students that they teach, and you clearly are doing that at Milliken High School and in this school district. It has been a couple of very difficult times for all of us because of the pandemic, but it's people like you that give us all the hope that the future is going to be as bright as we hope it will be. So congratulations.
Thank you. I will say I was speaking with the CEO of a tech company here in Long Beach, a rather large tech company, and when I said that my daughter attended a liberal arts college and she chose to study English and the humanities, he immediately said, "Make sure she applies here," and I was caught off guard because it was a tech company. He said, "Liberal Studies majors and people who study, they're deep thinkers, they know how to write, they can communicate, they do all of the things." So for those of you who are wondering what your student's going to do, there are tech company executives out there who understand the value of those liberal arts classes and the humanities, so I'll put another pitch in for that. So while you're thinking about STEM stuff, know that you can still work in those fields with degrees in the humanities as well. So thank you so much for being with us tonight and bringing your family out. Did you want to introduce anybody by name so we know who's in our room tonight?
Absolutely, so that all the attention is off of my face. This is my wife, Christine. She is also a teacher in Anaheim at Horseman. This is my daughter, Harper. Second grade at Weaver in Los Alamos. This is my mom, Lucy Underwood, retired teacher at Tiana Coverley for a while, and ended her career at Coverley. And I see I have some of her students in my classroom this year, or last year, so.
That's great. And I think I see Mr. Vega back there as well.
Principal, Mr. Alejandro Vega, and he looks very great, good in that suit.
I noticed he came in very sharp looking.
That is criticism on the website.
So I sense a theme about this website picture we have going, so.
You check it out.
Offered me a lot of support over the years and has given me, you know, a lot of good reasons to stay, to stay available to be a Milliken Ram, so I really appreciate that.
Well, we're grateful that you came out tonight, and we understand if you want to go celebrate some more, you're welcome to sit around for the rest of the meeting if you like, but we do understand if you want to head out and spend time with your family. Thanks again for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, there was some numbering issues that I was reading earlier on our numbers, so we are on actually number 12, public testimony on items listed on the agenda. I'm seeing none? Okay. Item 13, public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. I'm seeing none as well. Okay. So we're going to move on to Consent Calendar A. Again, a whole selection of reports. These are approval of these various reports. Colleagues, I will ask for any callouts, clarifications that you may have, or if you choose, need to pull an item. Mr. Otto, anything? Ms. Craighead?
No.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Yes, under Purchasing and Contracts Report, I was excited to see about our partnership with Cal State Long Beach in regards to our U.S. Diversity and Ethnic Study Courses.
Dr. Benitez.
Yes, along the same lines, so a few months ago, Mr. Moskovitz chaired with us all the important work that we were going to do through our extended learning opportunities. And I see a lot of funds and resources going school by school, organizations like, I'm sorry, Boys and Girls Club, Action Youth, Parks and Recs, Campfire. So just want to highlight that equity requires funding, right, and the important resources that are going to our schools, to our respective schools, but also the importance of our partnerships with our community partners, so that's it.
Great. Ms. Craighead.
Yes, I forgot, but I would like to thank all of the CAC members, because we're going to be, oh, were you going to mention that?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Because we have 15 more people who will be joining CAC, so thank you for stepping up and volunteering for that position.
Great, seeing no further clarifications, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Dr. Benitez?
Aye.
Ms. Craighead?
Aye.
Mr. Otto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That passes five zero with no abstentions. And I recuse myself from participation in Consent Calendar B. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 109-1 and 87-100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees or the awardees. Ms. Craighead, could you please take the item?
Yes, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes four zero with one abstention.
Thank you, Ms. Craighead. So we're going to move on to Staff Report. We have two good ones tonight. They're always good, but we have two tonight, and I'm going to ask Dr. Tiffany Brown to kick us off for item 15.1, Workforce Diversity Initiative Update.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the opportunity this evening. I'm going to be setting the stage for the workforce diversity presentation and the presentation that Dr. Baker will continue following. So tonight really begins a series of sharing around how we're working to center Black students from a systems perspective. And when we think about systems-level reform and how it happens, it's a rather simple and very complicated process. An issue is identified through data, there's analysis of the root cause of the issues, and a plan is developed to create long-term progress. When system reform is happening, the question of, "Have we always done it this way?" is often asked, and in fact, it must be asked. So you'll hear this question come up multiple times this evening, as I share with you, as Mr. Zaid shares with you, and as Dr. Baker shares. Sometimes, rather than working to change systems, we treat the symptoms of challenges that systems create. That works individually and very briefly, but does not solve the root cause. We're seeking to plant different seeds so that new roots will take hold, that will grow into a strong foundation, a foundation of how we stand for Black student achievement in our system. This is deeply important work. It's work that takes time, and it's also work that feels urgent. Our challenge is in balancing the urgency that we have to do better with our interest in planting seeds that grow deep historic roots for change. And I'll tell you some of the ways that we're working towards that. It actually began on December 1st, 2021, which seems like a very long time ago and is actually not. 1st, 2021, which seems like a very long time ago and is actually not that long ago at all, when you passed an excellence and equity policy, the likes of which has not been created by another district in our state. The policy is brave and bold. It's a call to action of all the work that is in progress now. The excellence and equity policy is brave because it acknowledges ownership for harm caused for Black students and students with disabilities in our system and in every educational system throughout the country. The policy was created by the Equity Leadership Team, or affectionately referred to as ELT, a committee that is composed of community, parents, and staff. The work of the ELT allowed us to call in community voices while those community voices were calling out our challenges. Their greatest callouts were that our policy and all of our work must lead to actionable change. And Dr. Benitez, that's something that you regularly ask when we bring forward a policy or a bold new idea is good and well, but how is it going to look? What are we going to do to implement? The question has been asked, what are you going to do? Well, the equity policy references 10 implementation areas. There are bodies of work happening currently around each of these areas, and tonight you'll hear about two. You'll hear about workforce diversity efforts by Human Resource Services to be introduced in a little bit more detail in a few moments. And you'll hear Dr. Baker sharing how student data directly contributes to district goals which call for change in school practice. So, that's the stage that we're setting with you this evening. Want to do that by sharing an opportunity that we were given to take our excellence and equity policy a little further in terms of implementation. So, the policy was passed in December of 2021, and we immediately began working towards the implementation of those 10 areas. It was in March of 2022 that Dr. Baker received an invitation for our district to be one of the districts that participated in the Public Education Leadership Project, also known as PELP, at Harvard University. And in that process, we were asked to come up with a problem of practice to bring forward, to join with other school districts and other leaders in education across the country, and to really refine the efforts that we were making around an area that we knew was big, that was important, and that we needed to be very systems focused, and we also needed to create sustainable outcomes. So, in July, and I'll say a little bit more about the Public Education Project. It's designed to bring a team of eight, and we brought eight, well, actually seven people from Long Beach to participate in this process at Harvard where you are engaging with other urban school districts. And you're working through a problem that teams came with. Everyone came with a slightly different focus. I'll share what ours was. And the intensity of about five days of really deep thinking around the work and the expertise in the room allowed us to move forward with a problem of practice that began looking like this. We went in with a really refined problem that we were pretty proud of, and we thought we had done the homework assignment. And so, this is the problem that we came with. LBUSD seeks to eradicate institutional bias and eliminate disparities in educational outcomes. And we came with a few focus questions. How can we implement the excellence and equity policy with commitment from all? And how will LBUSD address disparities in the implementation of the excellence and equity policy? We got on the plane. We went to Harvard, and we were feeling like we were good. We did our first meeting with our partner districts, who were Chicago Public Schools and Atlanta Public Schools, and they let us know that we had work to do. We went away and did some work, and we came back with a second problem of practice. Don't worry, I won't take you through 10 iterations of our problem. But our second problem, just to show you where our work and our thoughts went. LBUSD has an uneven understanding and demonstration of equity and access-aligned values, commitments, and expectations leading to inconsistent and at times biased classroom, school, and district practices that negatively impact the learning experiences, academic, and SEL outcomes for BIPOC students, students with disabilities, and students experiencing poverty. It's a problem of practice that takes three breaths to read. It's a problem of practice that gets us closer to what we are working to say, but it's a problem of practice that needed further revision. And one of the things that our partner districts, Chicago and Atlanta, asked us is, what do you mean? What are you really trying to say? And who are you working to stand for? And so, with that, we came away with a final problem of practice that's here. And this is directly connected to the frame that the excellence and equity policy allows for. It's a furthering of our work as we move into a space of practice. LBUSD has an uneven understanding and demonstration of culturally relevant practices, leading to inconsistent and at times biased classroom and school district practices. This has an overwhelmingly negative impact on the learning experiences, academic, and social emotional learning outcomes for Black students. This is the problem that we landed with. This is the problem that we are continuing to work on, and this is the core of work that is in front of us. It's a brave statement, but it is a statement that matches the place that we are in right now, the place that we have come to right now. And something that feels important to share, and I want to share this for community members who are listening to the conversation, is that the perspective when sharing this problem of practice with a room full of school leaders looks like, yeah, that's what we're going to do. And when we share this problem with a room full of community members or parents, they say, I have to, I could have told you that. In fact, one of our members of our ELT committee said, how come you had to go to Harvard to write that? And I share that with you because one of the things that is very important in the work that we're doing is we are planting new seeds, and we are doing that recognizing that we have a system and a community to bring forward. The system is working very hard on the work that we are laying out in front of you, but the community is long past ready for this moment to arrive. And so, I just want to put into the space this evening that that is the balance that we are working towards as we do deeper system level work and manage an urgency that parents feel, the community feels, that we feel around this topic. So, the theory of action that we walked away with, if we create collective ownership and monitoring of Black student achievement and well-being in LBUSD, build, revise, and use existing systems and protocols that reinforce expectations for quality core instruction and culturally relevant practices, develop tools to support and monitor culturally relevant practices to provide feedback, to grow staff capacity, then LBUSD Black Student Data, both qualitative and quantitative, will reflect an elimination of biased behaviors and practices that lead to accelerated growth in academics and social emotional learning. And as I read each of those bullets, you could actually identify them directly to implementation areas that are in the excellence and equity policy. So, you see this pattern of an overarching policy that's driving a standard of practice as we work towards change. The so that, so that every Black student will have their identities affirmed, talents cultivated, joy unleashed, dreams actualized, and agency realized. And I love looking at that picture every time of our, some of our earliest learners who may actually be a part of the class of 2035, which is a class our current kindergartners are the class of 2035. So, there's all kinds of connections being made as we enter into a strategic planning process with an idea that what we are working towards is a better system for every student who's here now and those who are coming right behind and moving forward to a year like 2035. So, in closing this part of the conversation this evening, I think it's important to say that the systems I'm referring to have not been created overnight. They don't change overnight. They do change. They do change. But our work is about reimagining policies to create a change in practice, and it's deep intentional work that we're grateful to have your support in doing. And as we continue to share today, and as we shift into the presentation around workforce diversity, you're going to hear some of the specific ways that we've laid out some of the next steps we're taking around recruiting, supporting, and keeping staff with us. So, a couple of the immediate changes that we began the year with that feel important to mention, because there is this balance between laying out long-term change and the urgency of doing work right now. The graphics that are here reflect two important and immediate pieces of work. One, led by Dr. Kael and OCIPD in the work around the understandings and the addition of culturally relevant and equitable instructional practices as a core component of the instruction that we expect in this time. And then, secondly, is the commitment to students, which reflects a revision to our Code of Excellence Equity and Ethics for students that was created by students. So, these are two immediate changes that we began this school year with, recognizing that there's a lot of work that connects to each of these documents and each of these bodies of work, but two things that need to be mentioned as we begin to enter into a space of what a systems change look like in terms of daily practice. So, with that, we have, unless you have questions directly for me, which I would welcome at any time in the evening, we're going to shift into some sharing from our really amazing Human Resources Team. And David Zaid is leaving, leading some exceptional work around workforce diversity and human resource practices. Oh, yeah.
No, we hadn't talked about it because we hadn't heard the intro. So, if there's any quick clarifications or questions for Dr. Brown before Mr. Zaid gets started, just on the background.
Yes. So, Dr. Brown, thank you for framing the conversations. I think the urgency that you so eloquently described, I think part of that also presumes, and in some ways requires, that through the acknowledgement of the bias and of the inequities, that we also have some idea on how to address those necessary systems changes, practices, policies, and so on, strategies in some case. I would venture to say that the data in and of itself doesn't necessarily mean anything without the framing, but the data, we could get data presentations all year, right? And so, I think conditional to that framing is also a responsibility to inspire confidence in our students, in our community members, in our staff, in our educators, and the team, that we do know what we're doing, and that in those cases that we don't, that we're still trying to figure it out, that it takes a lot of courage to also be honest about that. So, I kind of wanted to highlight that because we're going to hear data, and we're going to see data, and we're going to hear a presentation from sort of two levels or two areas. And I think it's important for us to also be cognizant that, yes, there are things that we know, best practices, evidence-based things that we know help to address the kinds of changes in our outcomes that we desire, but there are also areas that I think it's important to be transparent and honest about, that we either are in process of figuring it out and/or we don't have the whole puzzle assembled yet.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. So, I'm really proud to be able to introduce David Zaid and the Human Resource Services Team, and really express deep gratitude to them for the ways in which they're looking at data. The sharing that David and team will join with you on tonight really reflects another way that we're looking at existing data with new eyes and how we're challenging the ways in which we've always done things so that we can do more on behalf of students. And the data that you'll hear from David's team really reflects that work. So, thank you so much to your team, who, by the way, you look lovely in your HRS polo shirts and your uniform, as you call it.
Great to be before the board and our senior team to present. Want to just share that our equity policy, specifically the section that talks about implementation, share specifically that number nine says that we'll be promoting the recruitment of a diverse staff that reflects the demographics of our community. And tonight, we will be presenting on the data as well as some very intentional steps that have been taken. Before we do that, I just want to introduce the friendly HR team to you that is standing right here. And I want to introduce the team, and I'll ask them to stand up in just one moment, a little shy sometimes. I want to introduce the team because everything that you see doesn't happen because of one of us. It happens because of all of us. And so, I'll just introduce our director of HR, Ms. Kim Dalton, if you'll wave. Also, Janine Swarrenson, who does staffing for our high schools, as well as our substitutes. Heather Bigelow, who staffs our middle school and special education. And then, Janelle Harmon, who does staffing for elementary and Head Start. So, that's our HR team. You'll have an opportunity to hear from them, and then if there's any questions on some of the specific data, they may be coming up to help in the answering of those questions. Just want to share that research tells us that the classroom teacher has the greatest impact on student achievement and development. And with this in mind, teacher hiring and ensuring teacher quality in particular are the most important actions that a district can take. And the HR has been proactively moving forward with hiring practices to develop a very diverse talent acquisition strategy and to retain a, to recruit and retain a highly qualified workforce that's reflective of our community. I want to pause here on our goal for just a moment and just share the goals of workforce diversity and human resource practices are to develop a diverse and inclusive talent acquisition strategy and to recruit and retain a highly qualified workforce that is reflective of our students and community. While the data on tonight in this presentation focuses on race, ethnicity, age, and gender, I want to share that the diversity that we're talking about includes much more than that. When we use the word diversity, and especially diversity in our workforce, diversity also includes socioeconomic status and sexual orientation and physical abilities and religious and political beliefs. It also includes geography, and I could continue on with all the things that diversity is inclusive of. But I just want to highlight that although we're looking at specific slides that involve age and gender and ethnicity, diversity encompasses much more than that. And one of the things that we heard directly from our students that you will have an opportunity to hear about later on is diversity in our workforce and specifically in our teacher force and teaching. It matters. When there is diversity in style and culture and innovations and perspective, when there is diversity in how students' needs are met, it really matters to. when there is diversity in how students' needs are met, it really matters to our students. What you see before you is our current demographic data. This is demographic data for our entire district. This specifically includes, and I'll just look at that number altogether there. You'll see 7,393. There we're talking about our TK through 12 certificated staff, our certificated CDC and Head Start staff. And you'll see also our classified staff, and then you see our numbers altogether. That 7,393 is not inclusive of our substitutes, but it is inclusive of our FTE'd workforce in each one of those categories. I'll also share that when you look specifically under certificated teachers, you'll see that the number is 4,052. But in other places in the slides, you'll see the number use 3,743. And I just want to distinguish between those two numbers. In this particular number, TK certificated, the 4,052 is because we are including our counselors and our psychologists now in this specific number. When you see us refer to 3,743, that's when we're really focusing more on our teaching staff, and I want to distinguish between the the two groups there. There are a few things that are significant about this slide that are hard to recognize on its own. But if you were to look at some of our past presentations within the last two years, that's where you'll notice some differences. I'll call out just a few. You'll notice that under our TK through 12 certificated staff, our Asian staff increased from 7% to 8%. Our Hispanic staff increased from 25% to 27%. Our white staff decreased from 53% to 49%. And our two or more increased from 2% to 3%. You'll also notice under all staff that when you compare it to our students, our Hispanic students make up 59% of our district and are the majority of our district. And now when you add up the total number of employees, you'll see that the total number of employees in our district are now Hispanic. And there are a few firsts that are happening with the data here. I'll transition to our current certificated management staff, and I'll move through the slides pretty quickly. But on our management staff, you'll also see just the diversity in our management. We gave not only the percentages, but also the actuals in our school administrators. Next, I'll move to our age demographic data. And I'll share that on tonight, we pared down. I know this feels like a lot of slides and a lot of information, but we actually pared down the data significantly for you so that we could spend time focusing on the programs and projects that support this workforce diversity initiative. The age demographic data is important because this allows not only the Personnel Commission, who does hiring for our classified, and our HR team, who does hiring for our certificated, to come together and really look at where we might be able to anticipate retirements. And as you can see in our total workforce, we have 856 people who are above the age of 70. And I love that because that means they love Long Beach Unified, and it does not matter how long they have been here, they are willing to stay a little bit longer. And and that's exciting. But this gives us an idea of what we need to do in terms of hiring. I'm just pointing out that this is pared down data because this could have been broken out by certificated, classified. This could have been broken out in a variety of different ways. And we do do that to really anticipate specifically where our retirements will happen. You'll also have an opportunity to take a look at teacher ethnicity by level in terms of when it comes to ethnicities amongst our teachers. What do we find in elementary? What do we find in high school? Where do we what do we find in middle school? And sometimes when you look across the data, you see things that you might not anticipate. For example, when you look at our Hispanic teachers, you'll see 460 in our elementary and 230 in our high schools and 230 in our middle schools. And so when you're just looking for where are teachers located, this just gives you an idea. And then when you look, of course, at two or more races and when you look at specifically African-American, you see a little bit more of an even distribution across the levels. Each ones has, you know, highs and lows, but just gives you an opportunity to just see the data in a different light. I'm going to pause right here and see if there are any questions that you have before I get specifically into our new hire data.
Quick, quick questions. Sorry, Megan. The column other. Can you explain what those teaching assignments could possibly entail?
Sure. When you see elementary, high school, middle school, and other, other describes sometimes the work that's being done of teachers, but teachers on special assignment that you might find in OCIPD or that you might find working here in our central office. So it's just saying that other would be the teachers that are not specifically at a school site. Thank you.
Mr. Zaid, I know that you shared that you obviously can't share everything that's been disaggregated here. But I think, given one of the framings that you and Dr. Brown have presented to us on how important the impact is of a classroom teacher.
Absolutely.
I'm hoping that at some point, I know you got a lot to go, but these raw numbers, it's hard to sort of extrapolate. Are these numbers a reflection of our student demographics? Are these numbers a reflection of the communities that we're serving and sort of what that means right from that perspective? So just I know you're going to get to it, but you know, you know, in a vacuum, seeing 460 Hispanic students, I mean Hispanic teachers at the elementary school level could be interpreted differently. You know, if we don't have a sense of, well.
How does that?
Yeah. And also that we have more teachers at the elementary school level as well, right?
And thank you. Thank you for for pointing that out. I will say on our opening demographic slide, that's the only one where you will find our students right next to the different groups. And so once you start looking specifically at our students, that's where you start seeing over and under representation and our specific work and goals around looking to have our workforce match our students and and community. All right. Next, I just want to share some of our certificated new hire demographic data. And this is four years that you are able to take a look at. Again, when you take a look at our student, when you take a look at our student demographic data and then you look at our teacher workforce data and some of our other groups, you'll start to see under and over representation. What you're looking at here is some of the intentional efforts of specifically when we are hiring each year, what percent is broken down here? And you can see how it has changed drastically since 2019, 2020, when the following year, there were several initiatives that were put in place that, I'm sorry, not initiatives, but programs that were put in place to help us get some of the results that you you are seeing. But specifically, when we're talking about under representation, we're talking about our African-American teachers and we're talking about our Hispanic Latinx teachers. And the next slide just shows the actuals. Now, what this slide shows is the actual number that we hired in a given year. But what it doesn't show is it doesn't show all the staff that we hired. And so you will see that in 2019, 2020, the numbers are much lower because we we hired approximately about 140 new staff members, which is very different than 2021, 2022, where we hired about 400. And this year we hired about 300. But you can see with the intentional efforts, you can see just the number over the last two years in comparison to the previous years and the progress that is being made. Something else that is nice to actually see is, and again, this is a much pared down version, but these are just two data points that are coming from our new hire survey data where we talk to and hear from all of the staff that we hired this year. And one of the questions that we ask every year is what attracted you to Long Beach? And every year consistently, the highest number there at 82% is the district's location. Second to district's location is the diversity of students. So we're seeing that staff is saying, look, I want to come to Long Beach specifically because of where they are located and because of the diversity of the students and the diversity of the city. Next, our salary and benefits are the next highest that are attracting, followed by the Long Beach's reputation for excellence and equity. And then the professional development that is provided to support new teachers. In addition, you'll also see on the other slide, and I just want to call out one specific area, you'll see that of the new hires that we hired, they had, we asked about, were you previously employed with us? And you can see that 15% were college aides. You can see that 33% were sometimes substitutes while they were working on completing their credential. You can see that 7% were classified positions. And we currently have a grant with our Equity Leadership and Talent Development Team that is specifically focusing on helping our classified students who want to go into the teaching force pursue their credential. And then you'll see that 20% of our hires involve our student teachers. And that's a space that we we want to focus because when you have an opportunity to do an internship or to work within our district, you have an opportunity to forge relationships. You have an opportunity to, you know, develop relationships with not only teachers, but administrators. And sometimes when those positions become available, our administrators will often sometimes look at how making sure that those who were working with us as student teachers can be hired. And I want to speak to that for just a moment because that's an area where we said, if 20% of those that we're hiring were our student teachers, then how are we diversifying or making sure that our student-teacher population and group is actually diverse? And that's where I will say that our partnership with Cal State Long Beach, this is one of the first areas where we recognized that some change was needed. And change was needed because when we looked at the demographics within the credential program, specifically at Cal State Long Beach, we realized that while they are making active steps to diversify their credential program, and that's something that the district has been supporting them and working with programs with them on, we needed to open that up. And so we went from exclusively having student teaching coming from Cal State Long Beach to now having student teaching available with Cal State Dominguez, Cal State LA, and now USC. And I just want to dispel a myth for anyone who is out there who is watching this, who might believe that if you're giving more student student teaching opportunities to Cal State Dominguez or Cal State LA, that means less opportunity for Cal State Long Beach. And I just want to share that while Cal State Long Beach has one of the largest credential programs, our neighbor here at Cal State Dominguez has a very diverse program. And this year, in checking in on our student-teacher program under the Office of OCIPD, we were able to not only offer all of the opportunities that Cal State Long Beach needed, but then still have room for Cal State Dominguez and Cal State LA, which specifically, we have students who graduated from Long Beach schools who go to Cal State Dominguez or go to Cal State LA and say, I want my experience back in Long Beach Unified because I not only want to learn and grow there, but I ultimately would love to be hired there. And this is an area that we are expanding. Without spending too much time, I will also say that we came across a internal agreement that we were told about in terms of an agreement between the Cal States that we're still working through. But our aim is to diversify our student teachers and to continue to expand and create opportunities where they might be. I'm going to pause there and just see if there are any questions before I go into taking a look at the data in a in a new and different way. All right.
Oh, actually, wait, I had a question. So so you're talking about where we are recruiting teachers from. How do we ensure that the teachers we want to recruit have excellence and equity in mind? How do we communicate that to the new recruits?
That is a great question. And I'll just say that when we get to our strategies section and specifically what we've outlined, we'll talk about how we have changed our application, changed our interview questions, and made a few other changes to ensure that those who are the candidates who are interested in Long Beach are dedicated to excellence and equity. Okay. So tonight, we're going to be.
Mr. Zaid, just one clarification real quick.
Yeah, Mr. Zaid, actually two. But one's an observation, one's a clarification. So notwithstanding that, I think it's pretty clear, we don't have to make the case on why it's important to have a diverse pool
Right.
of 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 teachers. And I want to be clear with this, right? Because of the last thing that you said, that the assumption is there's a finite pie
Right.
that we're recruiting from, that's why I want to be clear. Even though the research and the evidence is very clear how important it is for students, for student success, to have diverse teachers.
Right.
In this case, black teachers.
Right.
But not mutually exclusive of other teachers that bring diversity to our classrooms. That this isn't just about putting black teachers in front of black students, right? That the benefits of a diverse pool and diverse hires is for all students. So taking that into account, really, we're talking about the importance of diversifying the pool first, right? Because if our pool isn't diverse, it doesn't matter what we try to do in terms of our hiring.
Right.
Right? So I want that to be clear. Could you just elaborate on that a little bit more, Mr. Zaid?
I could, but I would be repeating exactly what you just said. So so let me just say that absolutely agreed. We've heard directly from our students that diversity in our teachers matters. And it matters to them because students want to be exposed to different perspectives, different experiences, different thoughts. And students want to look at their teachers and see themselves in their teachers and have their teachers look at them and see their children in the students that they're looking for. They really want to have that relatability, and we heard that directly from students. So yes, all of the data supports it. And the best way to do that is to diversify our pool of candidates so that when we dip into that pool for hiring, we're scooping. into that pool for hiring, we're scooping out a diverse workforce that then gets selected for the position. That was a little bit of a remix, but same thing.
I'll take it.
So I want to share with you just some data, and I'll say that this was inspired by our classified team, specifically our maintenance team, who divided our district into four quadrants, to be specific on how they could meet their needs, to make sure that they had a balance between schools in the quadrant, and specifically looked at the city of Long Beach from east to west and then from north to south. Typically, for those who live in Long Beach, which includes, of course, Lakewood, you could almost go down Cherry and see the what would be considered the west and then what would be considered east of Cherry, what would be considered north of Spring, and what would be considered south of Spring. It's not a clear-cut line just like that because we had to make sure that there was a balance of schools, but it is looking at the data in a different way. And so when we began to take a look at the data by quadrant, one of the things that we began to see is we began to see not only where our staff was, but we specifically began to focus a little bit more on gender by quadrant to make sure that we don't have predominantly one gender in one area and not evenly distributed around the city. So that's one of the things that we were able to take a look at. In addition to gender, we were able to take a look at age. And so again, you're able to see it by quadrant, which gives you an idea of where retirements might be happening. And not just by age, but also by ethnicity. And when you begin to take a look at ethnicity by quadrants, you begin to see a little clearly how there is a divide. And I will also say, not just a divide, but there are community members and parent groups who have come to the district and they have spoken. And sometimes, one community member might be having one perspective based on the school that their child attends versus another community member who might be having a completely different experience. And when you start to look at the district by quadrants, you understand how both parents and community members could be absolutely correct in their assessment and specifically what might be feeding into that thinking. And so it wasn't just looking at our quadrant, but it was specifically asking ourselves, do we have schools that have a lack of diversity? Do we have schools that don't have any black teachers? Why is that? And what's actually happening there? Do we have schools that don't have any Asian teachers? What is actually happening and really understanding our demographic data, not just wide by our entire district, but breaking it down by quadrant and then going even further to take a look at our schools? And when we asked that question, we were able to say, we totally understand what might be feeding that perception because we do have sites where we do not have teachers who identify as African-American. We do have sites where we have teachers who may not identify as Asian. And I want to just qualify why I'm using that word, "may not identify," because I recognize that six percent of our teaching staff identify as two or more races. And so because they're identifying as two or more, we're looking at specifically who is identifying as African-American or black, who is specifically identifying, and then what does that tell us specifically about the need for diversity at our schools? Well, I'll share with you that that wasn't just a question that we had, but it was a question that we went in to explore. And when it comes to looking at systematic change and what specifically you're going to do, you have to look at practices and policies that might impede those efforts. And so one of the current practices that we are looking at, that we did hear from some of our school sites who just had a very different reality as it related to hiring, was looking at the need to revisit practices around our transfer process. And let me just share a little bit of the data and what I'm referring to. Specifically, in the year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, we took a look at our transfer data, and I'm saying "we" because our staff who facilitates transfer met with me, showed me the data, and we said, all right, I think we're on to something here. Let's dig a little deeper. And one of the things that we saw with the transfer data is, in the year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, the top five sites that people were requesting were all in one quadrant area. They were all in the northeast. So you saw who was selecting to go to the northeast. The very next year, this past year, we looked at the transfer process again, and you see again this trend of wanting to transfer to the east, southeast, northeast, southeast, northeast. And then when we did see individuals wanting to transfer from the east to the west, we noticed also a trend that there was one specific school that was being selected, and that particular school happened to be Longfellow that you see there. That led us to go a little deeper. And once you go a little deeper and get into the data and really start looking at who's wanting to transfer in, requesting to come in versus who is trying to transfer out, this is when the data specifically gets very interesting. I feel like there's a question brewing. Is it a question or a time check? Which one?
No, it's a question.
Okay.
But thank you for noticing that we do time checks occasionally now.
Yes.
You're talking about the transfer process, and all of us in this room mostly know what that means. Could you just do a quick what explainer of a transfer is-
Absolutely.
-for those watching at home?
For those watching at home, what we're talking about is, we're talking about teachers who request to transfer from one school to another school. Teachers are able to make that request each year, but I just want to qualify that a little bit further and share that transfer is based on seniority. And secondly, you must have all effectives on your evaluation in order to put in for a transfer. The reason why that becomes really important is because when we get to a data slide like the one that we are looking at in front of you, you see our most senior, effective teachers looking to travel in one specific direction. And when you travel from the west to the east with the most senior and the, I'm not going to say the most effective, but I will say also with an effective rating, that does have an impact in our system. And that's one of the reasons why we looked at the data in a different way, specifically by quadrants. Is that helpful?
Perfect, thank you.
So here, you can again continue to just see the data, and then this data, hopefully it doesn't confuse you there, but just want to share, this is really tracking what's happening, and this came out of a conversation when we were taking a look at transfer and trying to understand and receive some additional questions. And one of the questions was, well, how many people are transferring from west to west and from east to east? And what is the actual demographic of those in transfer? And you can see the demographics there in front of you each year. And that does allow us to draw some conclusions around not just where are people trying to go, but who specifically is trying to go. And because, let me just clarify one thing, when vacancies become available because of a retirement, when vacancies become available and those vacancies open up and we see that many individuals transferring to the east, what then it results in is it results in those positions being filled by transfer and some of those school sites not having an opportunity to, I'll just say, interview or hire that way. And what ends up happening and the conclusions that you can draw from that is that then has a direct impact on sometimes the diversity at those sites. And me showing you a slide like, here are the schools that do not have specifically black teachers. Here are the schools that specifically do not have Asian teachers. And when you look at this slide, you can see that in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, black, Asian, and Filipino made up only seven percent. This past year, they were zero percent. And so from that standpoint, it really gives you an idea of what's happening. This is just another view of what's happening throughout our city. The arrows, thin and wide, represent how many people are moving in a particular direction. And then last but not least, sometimes when we have individuals who have not requested a specific site, we end up with what we would say unfilled vacancies where we can begin to hire. And when you, these are two years combined here, when you look at how many individuals are we're hiring for on the east versus the west, again, the numbers just show that we're doing a lot more hiring of new staff on the west than we are on the east, and that does have a direct impact on our workforce diversity. So I said all of that, just to point out, we know we have work to do. And now we want to talk about that work that we're doing. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Heather, who is going to talk about some of our specific strategies, and then Kim, and then I'll come back, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Otto.
Yeah, just a quick question first.
David, quick question.
So when you said that on the west side, there are more opportunities for new hires because people are trying to move to the east, what is the effect? I mean, who are we getting and what does that mean?
So what I would say is, that's a great question. Here in Long Beach, we are not just looking to attract brand-new hires. We are also trying to attract experienced individuals who are dedicated to excellence and equity. But in general, if I was drawing a general conclusion, I would share that what that means is we have new teachers, either new to Long Beach or new to teaching, on one side of town, and we're not seeing that same level of hiring on the other side of town. And because we are being very intentional about diversifying our pool of candidates, that means one side of town, when they're dipping in to hire, they're pulling out some diverse candidates to hire, and another side of town is not having that same opportunity to diversify their workforce because those sites are already being filled by transfer. Is that helpful?
Yeah, one other question in the same vein, and that is, so you're out hiring, how many new, experienced teachers do you hire as opposed to brand-new teachers?
That's a great question. I did not put that slide in this particular deck, but I can come back and share. We typically will, in our new hire survey, we look at how much experience, and we also have data to show, how many people did we hire with one to two years of experience, three to four years of experience, or five or more years of experience? And I can come back and share what that looks like and the ethnicity breakdown with that data as well. That's a great question for me to come back with.
Great, thanks.
Good evening. We wanted to share that we had the tremendous opportunity and fortune to be able to meet with an HRS Student Focus Group on Workforce Diversity. We got to meet as a HR team, which was amazing to hear from our students about what they wanted in their teachers. So a couple of questions that we asked them was, does diversity in the teachers that you learn from matter and why? And a couple of things that they said was that it's extremely important, yes, it matters, and the reason is why is that you need to see yourself in the teacher, and the teacher needs to see themselves in you. And they also said that they want people from their community to be teaching them. Another question that we asked was, imagine that you joined an interview panel to hire a teacher for your school. What qualities would you look for in the candidates? A couple of answers that we got was high interest in the subject they are teaching and the ability to make it relatable, kindness, what are they doing to support their community, and someone that can bring opportunities and exposes to things that we're unfamiliar with. So it was just really cool to be able to hear from this focus group on workforce diversity and for us to be able to connect with the students and get some answers. We also asked them a few other questions about, like, what are some interview questions that we would get from them? Or we asked them to give us some samples, and we may have actually used some of those interview questions in our actual revamping of our interview, which was really cool. So they definitely brought us some new ideas.
Excuse me, can I make one point that I think is important because it ties in what we're doing as an equity policy and in the implementation areas that we picked? The first implementation area that we have are including student voice and community input in decision-making, and that's job one.
So some strategic practices that we're working on to recruit a highly qualified workforce that is reflective of our students and community include implementing a new video interview system to improve efficiency. We still definitely do in-person interviews, but we've also adapted a new interview system that's online that allows the teacher to do the interview right away as soon as we've met them at a recruitment fair or very, very quickly. And it actually allowed us to double our interviews that were done last year in person to this year on the video system. So it improved our pool and just getting people that we may not have gotten otherwise. Standardizing the interview process to promote diversity, mitigate bias, and ensure greater levels of equity. Revising our interview questions to center and attract equity-minded educators, and meeting with site administrators to refocus our efforts from seeking a culture fit to seeking a culture add. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kim Dalton, our director.
Hi, it's good to be with you. So our next slide is about our Grow Your Own Teacher pathway. And we have a lot of pathways in our district at school sites for engineering, medical, just a variety of different things, law. But we don't have any pathway that is directly for the teaching profession. And part of that is because teachers can come from any pathway. We need them in all the different pathways to be learning. But we also wanted to open opportunities for our students to really consider teaching as a career. And so this initiative allows high school students to return to their communities as teachers when they finish their university or certification requirements. So we have a partnership with Long Beach City College where if students complete a dual enrollment course outline, that will allow the students to achieve a certificate that would be awarded at their graduation that says if they complete their credential and want to come back to Long Beach Unified, we will have a contract for them. And so we're very excited about that. We went and talked with students from Jordan and Poly and Millikan last year, and the students were so enthusiastic. They're like, sign us up, we want to start this summer. And, you know, with everything, when you're working with colleges, it takes a little bit of time because they have to plan the classes. But Long Beach City College really rose to this occasion, and they've actually put together two dual enrollment classes that students can sign up for next semester, and you have, I think, a flyer. I think, a flyer on that. And so if students really want to get started before the next school year, they can take these two courses this spring and start it on that program. And so those courses are offered at City College. And then when we look at our next slide, we can see.
Before you move on to that, I do want to just give a shout out to our partners at Long Beach City College for working really quickly on that. I know, as you said, sometimes things take time and we can plant ourselves into a corner, but they really stepped up. So to Superintendent President Dr. Mike Munoz and the Board of Trustees over there, thank you for continuing to partner with us and vision with us.
And Ivory is going there next year, so she might be back to teach here.
And I will say, I think I overheard Mr. Zaid, speaking of Ivory and teaching. Were you her teacher, did I hear you say?
Yes, I was the mother's teacher.
Okay, that was, that's not what I thought I heard, but wow.
So I wasn't Ivory's teacher. I was the mother's teacher. She was in my fifth grade classroom at Lafayette, and the gray hairs are real.
Wow.
That was President Kerr that did that to you right now, Mr. Zaid.
And I don't know that I would have had I understood that was the actual story. So again, about growing your own, and thank you to Long Beach City College and sorry, Mr. Zaid.
And so you'll see the pathway that we have worked together with City College to lay out. And we wanted to have a pathway where students could make some choices, whether they wanted to go into early education, if they wanted to do a multiple subject credential, or if they wanted to go into a single subject credential, that they could get some courses that they could use towards just being ready to go into a credentialing program to get a degree. And so you can see the classes that are listed there. One of the classes, Education 20, there in the middle, that's going to tie in to our SEAL program, Work Experience Program, that we'll talk about a little bit later, where students who are in this program will have the opportunity to get field experience in the summer while getting paid as student interns. And then Ethnic Studies 6, there, is a class that is also an A to G requirement. So by taking that course, they would get GE credit and A to G credit. And so this just gives students a taste of education, but it also gives them that ability to branch off in whatever way they may choose to go as they look into education as a career. And so this summer, for the second year, we were fortunate to be able to employ high school students who have an interest, not really necessarily in teaching, but just an interest in working with other students. They want to work with kids and their future. Many of them say, yes, I want to be a teacher. Others say, I might want to be a pediatrician, or I might want to be a psychologist who works with kids. So they just have a love for working with youth. And so we had over 200 students apply for 50 positions, and they get placed at all the different SEAL sites around the city, and they help out in the classrooms with small groups or with individuals and just helping the teachers with whatever is needed. And students absolutely love the program. The staff at the school, the principals absolutely love the program. Everyone says, bring it back next year. And students who filled out the survey at the end to say, what did you think of this experience, said they're really considering teaching as a career. And that's what we want. We just want them to see themselves in that place where if they chose to be a teacher, they think I could do this. I can see myself in this job. And so in addition, we were also able to fund college aides as well to work. And during the summer, we were able to lower that requirement of the college units you have to have completed so that students who are maybe just starting out in college could also come in during the summer and work and see what it's like to be in a classroom setting and work with students. So we were able to do that as well. So looking at our data, you can see that we looked at our K-12 staff in this, in our district, and then we have our Long Beach Unified student totals for the different ethnicities. And then we look at our SEAL Work Experience students. Those are our high school students who we hired to work in our program this summer. And we can see that they very much reflect or even exceed in some areas the diversity of our teaching staff and our students. And so we're seeing students who very much represent the community in those classrooms working with students, and that's really exciting. And with our college aides as well, we're seeing that greater diversity in the areas where, right now, we may have some underrepresentation. We had representation with those students this summer in the classroom. So that's exciting. And last summer, we were able to hire 40 high school students and about 15 college aides. And this summer, we had 50 Work Experience students and 37 college aides. So it's really exciting how many students we were able to expose to the teaching profession. And I'm going to go ahead, if any questions on that, and then I'll go ahead and pass it back to David. Thank you.
So I just want to, oh, question?
Were you going to close it up and then ask for questions, or?
Yes, so I was just going to just share two more points. The last two points is, we have been really intentional about recruitment over the last three years. We were happy to return back to in-person recruitment. I didn't mention this, but let me just say that we are currently experiencing a teacher shortage. And in the middle of experiencing a teacher shortage, we are also being very strategic with our practices and programs about workforce diversity. At our recruitment night that was specifically held this year, we had over 500 candidates in attendance. Someone might be saying, well, why are you doing a recruitment night? Why are you not just doing what we used to do, which is go to our local colleges and go to recruitment? Our local colleges have recruitments, and we do attend those too, but those are normally at 1:00 or 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon. And what you find is not only individuals who are new, but you also find all of the people who probably are not currently working because they're looking for a job. When you host a recruitment fair in the evening, you're able to attract not only those who are new to teaching, but you're also able to attract experienced teachers. For anyone who has gone to our recruitment fair, you will see exactly how diverse it is. And so this is not just about being strategic. This is also about understanding that we also need to be efficient. And I'm really proud of our staffing team who put our video interviewing session in place because at the night of our recruitment fair, we had 500 in attendance. The very next day, 400 interviews were deployed because they filled out their applications right there and said, hey, I'm interested. We were able to get an interview to them immediately. And so one of the things that we know is, is that in order to be competitive, we not only have to be strategic, but we have to be very efficient. Really proud of the entire HR team who came out to make this happen. Just some next steps that I want to speak to. We're being very strategic in our recruitment, specifically when we think of our underrepresented groups. And we are not only going to a few conferences, specifically where there are black school educators, but also where there are bilingual educators who are there to be really, really strategic in our efforts. And then the last next step that I want to share is, you heard me talk about our transfer process tonight. You heard me talk about, I'll just say, a practice that follows contractual language. And so I'm really looking forward to working with employee relations and employee relations under the leadership of Steve Rockenbach, as well as our Taub Labor Partners, to collectively look at the data together and look at how we can collectively problem solve as we work together towards some mutual goals that we have in this workforce diversity initiative. And so with that, I will just end with a quote and open it up for questions. What questions can we answer for, for you?
Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, Mr. Zaid, that's a, and the team. Great presentation. Lot, lot of stuff for us to think about. So I'm going to ask, in the spirit of you potentially coming back with some of this information. And I'm going to anchor it in Dr. Brown's framing for the presentation tonight. Clearly, our district historically had practices, HRS practices, that did not get us the diversity that we needed. Again, without, I mean, that's just part of our historical systems, structural reasons that we do not have the desired diversity in our educators. And not just limiting it to or trivializing race and ethnicity, right, diversity in general. Understanding that we're hiring the highest quality educators here, Mr. Zaid, that we're not compromising, that you've given us really good sense of what we're doing to ensure that we have a high-quality diverse pool, both through policy and practice, right? Our higher ed institutions are also failing us because they're failing to produce a diverse candidate pool. And it's not me throwing them under the bus. That's the nature of, you know, it's hard to get diverse. So then strategy is, we build our own pool, right, our own pipeline to these. So my question, my first question is that there are also hiring practices and policies because just because we can ensure a diverse candidate pool doesn't necessarily mean that we will hire the most diverse candidates from that pool. So I'd love to hear, again, on a follow-up, what we're doing in terms of our hiring practices and policies. And then the third, the third component here is, once we hire you, how do we retain you and then make sure that you end up equitably, not all at the same schools? All right, so you touched on the transfer component of this, and I know some of this is contractual, but nonetheless, it needs to be upheld somewhere. And I'm wondering, other things like, Mr. Zaid, and I'm going to say it, right, this is an honest conversation. There is also, there has to be also an implicit reason why are more experienced teachers from the West end up wanting to go to other quadrants, right? So yes, there's data, but, but there's also something system-wide as to why they wouldn't want to stay at the schools that they were, and then that would open up positions where folks are either retiring or leave of absence. So again, broader question, but I think it comes back to the policy and systems here, right? There are reasons why parents also want to bottleneck students to particular schools in our district. And it happens to be in the same quadrant where we have our experienced teachers that want to go to that area. The last, the second question, Mr. Zaid, is also, it'd be wonderful, we have the overall student demographics and the overall educator demographics to also, you know, intuitively, I kind of know what this is, see what our student demographics are in those quadrants where teachers, experienced teachers want to transfer into, and what the student demographics are in those quadrants where our new hires, not necessarily new in terms of experience, but new teachers are coming in. And I'm sure you have some thoughts on that already. But I think context here is, policy and practice worked hand-in-hand to get us a diverse pool. But I think the work associated to retaining teachers and then where those teachers end up, either through fill or through transfer, also requires longer term, all right? Systemic issues that we're trying to address, that although there is an urgency involved here, it's going to take years to build up a pool. And not everyone retires next year as well, right? So we got a lot of wonderful work ahead of us, but those are some lingering questions that I have that sort of completes the portrait, right, on the urgency part.
Yeah, I appreciate the observations. I appreciate the conclusions. I appreciate the questions and the opportunity to come back with some additional, additional data. I will also say that when we specifically talk about HR practices as well as district practices with hiring, there were some things that we did have to take a look at. We had to take a look at how we were defining quality. What does quality actually mean and how are we defining that? And are there some old remnants from No Child Left Behind that really defined quality in regards to testing, in regards to GPA? So there are a variety of ways that you can define quality and then come back and take a look and say, how are we defining quality as it relates to what we see now, excellence and a commitment to equity? So I would say that there are definitely some practices that we were able to take a look at. And then we also had a mutually exclusive relationship with Cal State Long Beach. So when you actually take a look at the demographics of our hiring in the past, they matched the demographics of the credential program at Cal State Long Beach. And so there were some, I'll just say, there was some opportunity for growth. And what I love about this friendly HR team, and for people who are hearing me say friendly HR is not because HR is mean, it's because every time HR shows up, people are like, well, something must be wrong, HR is here. And so we're trying to rebrand ourselves with, of course, the nice blue polos that we're wearing tonight. But I'll just say, there is growth. And what I love about the HR team is they have jumped all in, feet in, because excellence and equity is what every student has always deserved, what our current students deserve. And we're rising to meet that need and do our best to put practices in place that help us reach our goals while being open to other ideas that we need to consider. And we are currently developing ideas for retention specifically because it's one thing to recruit you and hire you, especially when we know that we have some individuals who may be the only ethnicity on their campus, may be the only gender. And whenever you're the only of anything, how are we supporting you? And how are we making sure that you're successful? And how are we, so there's, there's work to do, and we appreciate the challenge and the call to continue to move in this direction.
Thank you, Mr. Zaid. Thank you for your team. Our president has left. I'm the vice president, I'm taking over. Don't let her know, which I think works out because sometimes when I'm out and about at schools, they call me Ms. Kerr, so it's only right. So colleagues, do we have any other questions or comments? You do?
Yeah, I, I want to quietly dissent from what Mr. Benitez says because it seemed like what was being said was that, all right, we're ready to now do a good job. And I think Long Beach, I mean, I know personally that for 70 years, Long Beach Unified has had a great reputation for being a great school district and doing great things. And we largely were, achieved that position because we, we did what we said we were going to do and people believed in us, and we developed trust as a result of that. Over time, our goals and our, what we're trying to do have changed, and they're changing now. And I think this board supports those changes. I think that it's important that what we recognize is that we're building on a good, long tradition of leadership in the field of education, that we are in a very tumultuous time in education because of the ascendancies of schools of choice, because of people thinking that maybe we don't need public schools anymore at all, and that in order to stay the course of what we do, we've got to work hard to do the kinds of things that I think we're now trying to do. But it doesn't mean what we had been doing was bad. In fact, I think that, again, we are where we are because of what it is that we've done, and where it is that we're going is testimony to that as well. And so I think that, that this is a very inspirational presentation. And so I think that, that this is a very inspirational presentation. You answered questions I didn't have. You made points that I'd never considered before, and I've seen, at 16 years at Long Beach City College, 25 years at the aquarium where we talk about diversity and, and, you know, getting the right fit, and it never seems that we can do the perfect job of it. And, and I don't think we're going to do the perfect job of it either. But we're asking hard questions, and we're asking people to come along, and we're asking people to believe in us and trust in us and question us. And I know there are people out there that, for all kinds of psychological or sociological or personal reasons, want to say, okay, you know, this is it, or this isn't it. We just have to stay the course. And I, like I said, I'm very inspired by the presentation tonight because what you talked about was, this is what it is. This is who we are. This is the things that we've learned and learned recently, and now we're going to try and do these things. We have a set of goals that we're going to try and achieve, and these are the ways that we're going to go about it. And let's just see where we go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. I'll just respond and say, I didn't take it, you know, quite, quite like that. I did fully understand what you are saying, and I will share that there were, there was several years ago that HR and the team, I had an opportunity to participate even before I was working in human resources, where we went to HBCUs, and we were specifically strategic about trying to recruit.
Right.
However, the outcomes that we're seeing are specific to a variety of strategies that are all taking place, and I would also say, having a bold and audacious equity policy that then allows us to look at all our other practices and policies and ask hard questions. And what I understood the comment to be, had more to do with asking those hard questions while, of course, honoring our past leadership, but really looking at how we could be intentional in our efforts, and most of all, measuring our success by the outcomes we're receiving, not by our efforts. And what I'm happy to present in the data is progress towards those outcomes. We have a long way to go, but we are well on our way to making steps in that direction.
Dr. Benitez?
Yeah. This is good. We're going to have a discussion tonight, Mr. Otto. So I do take issue to the characterization that somehow my quote-unquote "hard questions" are a referendum on the whole history of our district. I kept it specific to our hiring practices and policies. I want to be clear. And I kept it specific to the data that was presented. If our goal as a district is for our educators to reflect the communities that we're serving, and we are not achieving that goal, then I can conclude that our practices did not get us both the equity of opportunity that you're talking about in terms of diversifying our pool, but also neither got us the equity of outcomes. That at the end of the day, the whole purpose here is to diversify, right? Because we're saying diversity is a good thing vis-à-vis this anchor equity policy, our educators. So I do take issue with my comments, my questions being characterized as being a referendum on our district and/or me just making a blanket statement that our district didn't do anything good. And so thank you, Mr. Zaid, for, because I did get a sense that you sort of understood both the question, but for me, the anchor is, if this is our vision, we're going through our community visioning, strategic planning, and we are not living up to the vision, then obviously, we're not doing something, or we need to change what we're doing, right? And our equity policy, as I said, I'm anchoring it by the acknowledgement that we could do things differently. That doesn't take away from, I gave props today on the ELO opportunities, right? These are commitments that our superintendent updated us on. Our assistant superintendent said, we're going to rock and roll with ELO, and then it ends up in a budget to the action piece. So I do take issue with that characterization.
Well, thank you, everybody. Mr. Zaid and team, thank you so much. At this time, we're going to take a break. We're going to take a five-minute break, stretch, and we'll be back at 7:05. Thank you, everyone. Back, everybody. Break is over. Let's get our noses back to the grindstone here. So moving on, we have item number 17, administrative assistance. So I'll pass it over to Dr. Baker.
Actually, Vice President Craighead, we have a second staff report that is 16.2. So I'm going to actually, this is a much briefer staff report, continuing the conversation that Dr. Brown started with 16.1 Workforce Diversity Initiative update and the conversation that Mr. Zaid led. And so 16.2 tonight is the first of two presentations this month, both of which will have an aspect of centering Black African-American student achievement. Tonight, I'm going to be just focusing on the alignment of district goals, as you have seen them before you, and what that looks like as goals cascade to school sites. I mean, specifically, when I think about data that has been provided to you, all this builds on six different presentations that have featured the achievement levels of our Black or African-American students and have been provided in disaggregated data and ways for us to better understand how our system is addressing the needs of our Black and African-American, Black African-American students. So you have some materials in front of you in a manila folder, as well as the presentation slides that were provided. My slides come at the second half of the presentation that Dr. Brown started. So I'll give you a minute to locate those. It would be slide number 10 of the other packet. And it starts with the slide that you see before you. Okay. So the first, tonight's presentation, again, will focus on the alignment of district and school goals. On October 19th, our team will be before you, building on the opportunity to center Black African-American student achievement. And that presentation will focus on programs, practices, and engagement beyond what I'm going to talk about tonight. So why are we focusing this month on centering Black African-American students? And this conversation came up as Dr. Brown spoke and talked about our problem of practice, as well as what Mr. Zaid presented, in our desire to change the outcomes of our students. We want, when we look at the data for our students, I'm just going to share, just publicly share, several of our challenges as we lean into different ways to look at goals and different ways that we're thinking about improving the outcomes for our Black students. So overall, when we look at our S-Buck scores for Black students, 33% of our students in English Language Arts score at the met or exceeded level in comparison to all students at the 48% level. In math, that is 18% compared to all students scoring 33% met or exceeded. Our graduation rate for our Black African-American students is 86%, while white students, it is 90%. And when we look beyond just graduation, but look at A-through-G readiness, which means a student can go directly to CSU or a UC school, 49% of our Black students attain A-through-G while they are in our high schools compared to 58.6% of all students. I'm also going to be speaking just a little bit about goals that are set around students' social, emotional well-being. And while I won't speak specifically about the data tonight, in the record of our poll survey, which was given last spring, and actually, our fall survey was just given last week, in several areas, including sense of belonging and identity, our Black students rate their sense of belonging and their identity lower than other subgroups. And lastly, when it comes to suspension at all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, our Black students are more likely to be suspended. And I'll just, I'm just going to pause there. These are the brutal facts of what we're experiencing right now. It doesn't mean that we can't do better, and it doesn't mean that we won't do better, but just holding on to those brutal facts. So why are we talking about centering Black African-American students? Because we know that our students deserve an increased focus with new goals and different ways, different tools that we're using, different programs and practices, so that their outcomes improve. And I heard this mentioned earlier tonight, that when we think about, and I'm just going to make a connection, that when we think about improvement, improvement does not come in the form of a pie. When one group improves, another group doesn't improve. Or when one group improves, somebody else misses out. The kind of improvement we're talking about is when we think about our African-American students. When our African-American students improve, it also means that we're improving something in either in the educational experience or the outcomes for all students. There are a lot of academic ways to talk about that, but tonight, I'll just, I'll use what I think of as kitchen-table talk. When we improve the outcomes for our Black students, we improve the outcomes for all students. You have made a strong statement as a board that your behaviors in the boardroom are a leading indicator to what changes for students. It's a huge move for a Board of Education to say, what happens in this boardroom by adults actually changes what happens for students. And so I'm going to tell you a little bit about how things move from a boardroom and from a senior team who's working really hard at the senior team level, down into the system. And it is our expectation that eventually, all that we're up to goes from here through many different dotted lines and lands in the classroom experience for our students. We know that when we change adult behaviors starting here, outcomes can change for students. That when we interrogate systems, and we've heard a little bit about different ways of looking at systems, who have systems harmed? Who have they elevated? Who have they benefited? Who have they oppressed? We look, not at the individual level, but when we look at the system level, that is the place for us to do our work. And I heard Dr. Brown talk about planting different seeds that grow different roots that bear fruit in a different way, and that that is what we're up to. You're also going to hear me briefly talk about the use of data differently at a system level. So building on a foundation of, oops, didn't even show my slide, okay? Building on a foundation of those things in mind. So just to review, what's before you all and what is on the slide are our district-level goals. These goals do two things. They bring excellence and equity together. Excellence, which are universally high expectations in all areas. When we're thinking about student achievement, we're talking about a year's growth or more than a year's growth, that is also acceleration, and the equity aspect of that, which is acceleration if you're below grade level, and further down into the equity goal of looking at our Black student achievement. So that, when we do write by our Black students and increase if you're below grade level, and further down into the equity goal of looking at our Black student achievement. So, that, when we do right by our Black students and increase their outcomes, we are thinking about all students in that. And so, you'll see in two of these goals where very specifically, the outcomes for Black students are centered, specifically in Goal 1 and Goal 3. Why? Because those are overarching the most dramatic gaps in our student outcomes, and that's where we want to focus our energy. So, tonight, I want to share a little bit about what might be thought of as monitoring systems, ways of thinking specifically about how we're looking at student achievement and how we're using all of our systems and our data to focus on the improvement of our Black student achievement. So, three ways to think, think about this, this evening. The first is that data reports that are shared with you all have a cascade to schools and to classrooms. So, while in the past, there might have been a dataset that's shared with the board, separate dataset at a different time, shared with principals and teachers, in our data monitoring calendar, what you're seeing is that when we're collecting eye-ready data, when we're collecting foundational reading skill data, when we're looking at grades, when we do a poll survey, when we're looking at A through G, the leading indicators of A through G on track, which you've heard since July of this year, those reports are also shared and, shared and used at the school level and at the classroom level. It's not different data, it's just different ways of looking at the data. So, in our district goals, you'll see in Goal 1, the specificity around a year's growth, the specificity about acceleration, more than a year's growth for students who are underperforming, and then there's a goal around the way we expect Black student achievement to improve. When we get to the school level, what you're going to see is that that is monitored at the level that a, that a principal looks at data and that a teacher looks at data. And what comes to you are the compilation of those reports at certain times of the year that are the monitoring calendar, but same data shared from the boardroom to the classroom, which is really important for you all to know. The second thing is that we have revised the goal templates, and you're going to see, I'm just going to represent and allow the opportunity for Mr. Moskowitz and Dr. Camerino, if you have specific questions, but to represent how things move from the boardroom and from a senior staff or district goals into working with schools. And all three levels, Dr. Lund included, have revised their goal-setting templates that schools use to be coherent and to be aligned to the district goals, and also to center Black student achievement and the monitoring of Black student achievement. Not alone, you'll see in the examples that I've provided, that they're also monitoring other groups, but very specifically calling out African-American student progress and results in the areas of data that you also are looking at as a board. And then lastly, you want to call attention to what our monthly data review and monitoring opportunities that take this role of principal supervisor who walk, principal supervisors who walk alongside principals and buildings, who visit classrooms regularly, who look at a school's specific data regularly, who participate in things like collaborative data study with teams at the school, and who have individual expectation conferences and accountability conferences with our principals in this role of principal supervisor. This is a team who has absolutely grown itself and sought opportunities to grow in being more equity-centered in understanding how to use data differently, how to bring cultural competence into their work, into the work that they do with principals. As recently as this summer, went to a conference for, spent actually a week with the Leadership Academy in New York City, building their toolkit to be culturally competent principal supervisors and to really ensure that our students have every opportunity that they can to build success through our processes and protocols. So, I'm just going to give you just a quick look at the way that district goals get translated to school goals in the three forms. So, I'll give you a glimpse at elementary goal-setting, and I'll invite Mr. Moskowitz at any point to jump in. I want to highlight a couple of things, and then certainly want to, you have, to have an opportunity to ask questions or for Brian to jump in. Specific to the elementary template, one of the things you'll, you'll notice is across all three levels, there are a lot of similarities this year. So, these three-level offices have come together and really thought about, from a district goal, down to school goals and classroom goals, what is the same across their levels? And then there are a few things that are, that are nuances of differences. So, you'll see right away in the elementary school action plan, which a principal completes either by him or herself, or more typically with a team that might include another administrator, counselor, their instructional leadership team may present, they may have grade-level reps working on the development of the goals. You'll see that there's identification of a critical area of need. So, the question, considering all of your findings, what is the most urgent gap? So, straight to the top, straight at the top, what is the critical area of need? And you'll also notice that Mr. Moskowitz and team have built in results of an equity, a building equity audit that causes them to look at all different aspects of their work at the school level and to identify that urgent need. And then something you'll see across all three of the goals templates this year, elementary, middle K-8, and high school, is that the goals and expected outcomes that are the goals that you approved as district, district goals are featured there. And that's, that is really with intention. That is so that all school goals are cascading off of the district goals, which, as you can see, center the needs of our, our Black students. Secondly, just paying attention to continuing with elementary, you'll see the specificity. So, in elementary, how will you measure progress throughout the year? How will you measure English learner, African-American, and special education student progress? And then an opportunity in the content areas for principals to describe the data they'll collect and how they will be progress monitoring for these important groups. I'm going to pause, Mr. Moskowitz, and just if there's anything you'd like to share beyond what I've shared or for the board, just to take a pause and ask questions about something I've shared, or beginning to now see the translation from district goal to school goal, and anything that you'd like to notice or ask.
I think you've covered it pretty well. One thing I would point out at, at our level, we did keep two goals that were originally with district goals last year. We kept on our elementary goals for this year. One of them was related to increasing and improving the communication, the two-way communication between school, schools and families. And we, we know that's important at all levels, but it particularly sets the foundation at the elementary level, so we maintain that. And the other one, you'll notice, just around the idea of developing, implementing practices to increase workforce diversity. We know that that's not necessarily an elementary principal's sole job, but I think a couple of you brought up the point that when they get their pool of candidates, they're the ones making the selection, and so we want to try to diversify our workforce. So, those are just some, some holdovers that we are continuing to look at. And the piece, I would say, around the, the equity-centered problem of practice or dilemma, really the way you can think of it is, so you'll, you'll look at your data, and you know, every school has glaring needs in certain areas. And so, one of the things we encourage our principals to think about is to ask themselves, why? Why is that data showing up the way it is? And you might even, you might even have to ask yourself why a couple of different times to get down to the root cause. And that root cause is what we're actually trying to get to. So, you could look at suspension data, but why are students being overrepresented in suspension? And you could get down to things like adult perceptions. You can get down to things like building up community within the classroom, building up community within the school, ways to bring in restorative practices. So, there's, there's all these things that you can get to. And then, once you identify the root cause of some of that data as best as possible, then that's where we start putting plans together to try to address those root causes. So, just an example of the work, it's, it's not easy because the data is complex. There's not one thing that's going to fix, quote-unquote, "fix" the data, but it's really about working with site teams, going through this process with your entire stakeholder group, and just trying to, to set an expectation that we're going to set high expectations, high goals, and monitor those throughout the year.
Really quickly, when you say monitor these throughout the year, how often and at what frequency are we talking about?
Yeah, so you can look on that second page, right, the one that's up on the screen now. So, every quarter, we have certain data points that we are expecting sites to look at. This is just a template. We have one that's obviously completed for our level and for, for individual schools. But after quarter one, for example, there's an ELA performance task that students will take this month in October, I can't believe it's October, and we will have them look at that, that we already have our eye-ready results that were completed as of last week. So, we'll be looking at those diagnostic one data points. We just did the poll survey you referenced. So, at end of quarter one, we'll look at all of the key data points from quarter one and make some decisions about next steps. You'll see the same thing. So, each quarter, there will be some consistencies, eye-ready throughout the year, performance tasks, and some of the standards-aligned tasks or assessments. But each year, there will, or I'm sorry, each quarter, there'll be additional assessments that we add on, and specifically looking through the lens of all students, our African-American students, our English learners, and our students in special education.
And to confirm, you're saying each quarter, there'll be one-to-one visits with each principal to go over these statistics?
Yeah, so we actually meet, principal supervisors are out at sites at least once a month, and in some cases, twice a month. And every time we're out at sites, we're in classrooms looking for impact of our professional involvement, and we're looking at some aspect of data to say, how are we improving? Then we have what we're calling collaborative data visits. Those are two very specific times in the year where we go out to the site with district leaders in addition to principal supervisors, and we're sitting down with the principal and site teams to do some really intensive digging into the data, not just to look at the data, but to make some determinations about, okay, as of December 1st, with this data, what are you going to do differently in the next two to three months that will even more likely increase the ability for you to meet your goals by the end of the year?
And thank you for that explanation. I think the one that, thing that's always tricky about goal-setting is because when it comes to goals, there needs to be an undertone of culture setting as well. And so, when I see these things, I guess I'm asking these questions because I want to make sure that this isn't us just checking a box. This is us setting a culture within the elementary component of our district, middle school, and obviously through our high schools. And so, I just wanted to hear a little bit of how we're setting, resetting the culture more than checking a box.
And a great example of that, the district invested quite some of funds for what we call our data day or planning day. So, the day before the teacher's official first day, so this was Monday, I think it was August 29th or something like that, all of our teachers were paid to come back, those that were able to come back, and they met with their principal to really look at data, not from a, a little bit reflective, how to do last year, but more so like, this is the data of the students we have right now, what are we going to do to meet their needs? And they, so they looked at data in a very intentional way, then started to look at some of their unit guides and their plans, so that as of day one, when students arrived that Wednesday, they already had an analysis and a plan, a kind of a basic plan in place. Obviously, it's evolved over the last several weeks as this more complete plan has been developed. But from that very first day, a real intentional look at the data, looking forward to say, what are we going to do differently so that we get different results than we had last year?
Completely random, but culturally, you make me, you remind me that I say "elementary" incorrectly all the time. It's, I said, culturally, we say "elementary," but "elementary," right? Anyway, thank you for the explanation.
Just, I want to make sure I understood the, the, on the second page, the page that's up there now, I understand how ELA is going to be measured. I understand how math is going to be measured. I even understand how social-emotional learning is going to be measured because we've got these tests that we're doing. But I don't understand how cultural climate is being measured.
Yeah, so culture, climate, and actually, maybe Dr. Brown can expand, it's generally, it's kind of a broad term, but there are specific things within there related to attendance, suspensions, chronic absenteeism. So, those specific measures are kind of broadly grouped into category around culture. Can you go shoot out of that, Dr. Brown?
Yeah, so in some of our survey data, there's also data around like student perception of school safety, student perception of respect amongst students, things that are impacting their climate while they're on campus that would be factored into the culture and climate data points.
And where does that information come from? Is it testing that's done, or is it?
It comes from actually surveys, and then this year, also student-focused groups and teacher-focused groups.
Okay, good.
Something I think, Mr. Miller, that you're asking that's also important is when you see the cycles, so tonight's just a kind of a mini illustration of them, they're what might be referred to as rapid continuous improvement cycles, different than saying, in September, what are your goals, and we'll see you in June. So, the processes now that are embedded into the system are rapid cycles of improvement, which mean that teachers and principals have much more likelihood to respond to the data with the new tools that they, that they've received. Even though we know that eye-ready has posed challenges for many teachers, it's also something that can be used, and once teachers, I think, are more comfortable with it, they'll see it as a stronger tool for being able to take action on something that's coming to them more quickly. Yeah.
Dr. Benitez, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
So, Dr. Baker, one, one of the things, I just thought about the, the culture piece right now, Mr. Miller, and I think a big part of that, of the culture setting, comes from being candid and intentional with how, again, what, what our, what our vision is, is either tracked and/or monitored. But, but I think the intentionality here is that this isn't about individual teachers, real or perceived, not doing what they're supposed to be doing. This isn't about counselors not doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's the broader system, all right? And it's acknowledging that the broader system, that in spite of the broader system, teachers were still able to have very successful outcomes, right? But that we didn't have consistency across those outcomes. So, I do want to highlight, because there may be an interpretation that when we say things like two or year, more years behind, that, you know, we're coming down on bad teaching or bad teachers. No, it's a system approach. So, I think the, the, the great thing for me here is that we, we're looking at it at a system level, and that we're holding ourselves accountable at a system level. So, I think part of that is the culture from our leadership. So, thank you, Dr. Baker, because then we can come back and ask Mr. Moskowitz, okay, where's the accountability at the school site for this?
I'm glad you said that also because it, it speaks to our curiosity about our data. So, you heard Mr. Zaid in his presentation talk a lot about getting curious, asking ourselves, why has it been this way? Asking ourselves the five whys, as Mr. Moskowitz said. Why? Why until we get to, to root causes? But without elevating some of these things to this level, we, we never get to that. And so, being curious and not only being curious, but interrogating systems is a way that we can really demonstrate our commitment to doing, doing better.
I can just add one quick example. So, last time we were at a board meeting, we talked about the data from our LLI and WonderWorks interventions. So, this last Friday, we had our principals at a principals' meeting, and we were looking at that same data with them, but from a, a little bit more from an inquisitive, like notice and wonderings, what do they see in the data? But we left them with some very specific, concrete next steps that we expected all of them to go back and implement at their site based on that data. So, it was a collective analysis of it. It was a collective understanding of what the data showed and didn't show. And it was then with some very concrete steps that they needed, like I said, go back and implement in order to show the improvements that we expect in the year ahead. So, just a great example of looking at the data, analyzing it with our principals, setting high expectations for their actions, and then the follow-up as a principal supervisor is when we're out there in a couple of weeks saying, okay, what did you do with those actions that we expected of you? So, the flow-down from data to action.
Just want to represent at the middle K-8 level, whoops, go in the wrong direction. Again, you'll see district goals right at the top, so centering the aspects of Black student achievement that we are doubling down on in our district goals, cascading all the way through the MSK-8 vision and mission, and then in Dr. Lund's division, guiding schools to share their mission and vision and their theory of action. And then the specificity for our Black African-American students that is in addition and a revision because there is different data to look at this year and also a different approach. So, cascading right from the district goals to see in a couple of different ways, you can see S-BAC, edgelastic, which are ongoing assessments of progress, the eye-ready, ELA growth, also broken down into those categories, as well as in the areas of math. So, these are just really, these are just glimpses at multi-page documents that, once complete, it might be nice to have a principal or two come and share what it actually looks like to complete these documents and share more a comprehensive perspective of how they take the district goals down and use them as their, their school goals, and how a teacher thinks about those goals as well. Some of the, the nuances you'll see for high school, you'll see that Dr. Camerino and team, again, have centered the district's goals, and then what that looks like from a high school perspective. So, really thinking about Goal 3, which has really specific way of thinking about secondary A through G attainment, looking with Dr. C. Brown's support, looking at a cohort of ninth graders, rather than just single-year change, year to year, following a cohort following a cohort of students who are ninth graders right now and watching their increased ability to, based on their course sequence and their achievement to meet A through G. So a different, a different kind of, a different way of looking at data in terms of our goal around A through G attainment. Do you want to add anything from high school perspective? And then also I'll show these to Dr. Camerino, just again, looking at specific ways of tracking data. The A through G on track, which is a leading indicator, you'll see that broken down, not just by all students, but also by black and African American students.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Dr. C Brown and his team because as we pulled up this data for the high school office, we're actually, actually also pulling the data for sites individually by pathway and by subgroups to make sure that they are in line so that the schools don't spend time trying to research the data, but giving them the data and making meaning of the data when we present it. So as Brian was mentioning, our CDS is a collaborative data studies are going to be done after internal learning walk in the fall. So when we do that internal learning walk, then we'll have the CDS visit. And then after the CIV that we do, that's official kind of with other district folks that'll come out and other sites potentially, then we will have our second CDS. So we'll really look at that data once, once again, with the data that the research team is going to provide us.
The significance of what Dr. Camerino just said really fast is that combining opportunities to be in classrooms and look at instructional practice and ask teachers, what might you need to support you better in your classroom? Combined with data, combined with a, a study and the opportunity to bring together what some people would refer to as qualitative and quantitative data together, gives you a much stronger picture of what's happening at schools than just relying on a single data point or just relying on, on a classroom observation. So together, these are things that allow us a, a more holistic picture.
Got it. Just another quick question for understanding the time periods. So I saw in middle school, they're doing in the fall and spring and they're looking at it against the previous year's statistics. But we don't have the, the time periods for high school. I would assume that they're the same?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And, and I'm assuming there's also the comparison against the previous year?
And cohort data, more importantly, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Good question. That's good. That means you're seeing the alignment across all of the levels. And that's actually a really important part of our work. So I will close tonight. Tonight was really just an opportunity. So when we're back on, first of all, taking from all of the data sets that you have had access to and have been presented, not to repeat them, but thinking about really six big areas of, of reports that have been disaggregated for you to look at and to center our black students. Today's an opportunity to see that cascade so that on October 19th, when we do a further conversation about programs and practices and engagement, you're also thinking about the connection to, to schools. And so my ending today is just a reminder, we started with Dr. Brown talking about from excellence and equity policy to practice. And it only matters if you all have a bold policy if we implement and take things into practice. So we, we talked about, Dr. Brown talked about those 10 areas of practice, two or three of which have been touched upon in many ways tonight. We talked about systems and structures that need to be built, some that need to be dismantled and some that just need to be enhanced with new sources of data and new ways of thinking about our, our goals. And then lastly, just the power of adult behaviors. What happens, and this is something that I just think of A.J. Crabbe Bell from the Council of Great City Schools, who you have worked with and who we, who we started with a couple of years ago, that when behaviors change in the boardroom, they change in an organization. And so you have set a tone for that in your work as board members, as board leaders. I hope that our senior team is also representing that. And what we're starting to see is the cascading effect of thinking about what we can change as a leading indicator as adults that we believe will have an impact on students. And so I'll, I'll leave just with this part of our equity policy. The reminder about what equity is in Long Beach Unified, which means that we will take action to end systemic racism and discrimination that harms students because of their race, culture, disability, economic description, immigration status, gender identification and/or sexual orientation. If LBUSD is acting upon this definition, then the descriptors listed above will not be predictors of success or failure in our system. And so it is incumbent on us to think about continuous improvement in a new way. And that is the legacy that we want to, we want to leave and that we are up to in our work. So I hope tonight is giving you just a sense of all that you have defined as district goals along with me and how that looks when it gets out to a school building, to our students. Any last questions that you want to, to ask?
Well, it doesn't look like there are any questions, so I just want to thank staff for that report. Oh, you do have something?
It's not, it's not a, it's a point and seeing all this, it reminds me, and nobody else will relate to this, but it reminds me when the federal sentencing guidelines came, came out about more than 20 years ago. You, if you were in the field of criminal law, you looked at it and you said, what the hell is this? And how am I going to ever figure this out? But over a period of time, you did figure it out and you figured out how to use it and how to get better at it and to create arguments that were persuasive based on that and not just on, I just happen to be thinking this today. This strikes me like that. This strikes me like there's so much stuff here and you guys are doing it all the time. I mean, it's very impressive, but more than that, it's just, takes a while to absorb and to work with. And I forget the exact words that you used, Dr. Baker, but it's, it's, well, I'll use where you did use, it's, it's a, it's a leading indicator. It's not a lagging indicator. It's what you do now and get, get the information because it's going to help you do stuff in the future. You have to get that. It just takes a while to get that and it's a, we've, we frequently in this boardroom hear the phrase drinking from a fire hose. But, but it's, it's, it's very impressive as, as a way to do this and to come up with data and ways of saying it. I mean, I suppose somebody could say, eh, the data's not worth anything, but you know what? If you don't do anything and, and, and you can, this is a conversation. This is an ongoing conversation, measured conversation. So.
And, and I'll thank each teacher and each administrator and each support staff who are working together in a continuously improving organization, which is a learning organization. I think what you just said, Mr. Otto, really represents us as a learning organization that we don't always have the answers, but we do know how to learn our way in to answers through experimentation, through great teachers who are trying things out in their classrooms, school teams that are working together and the use of best practice and evidence-based practice. So really important what you just said. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions or comments?
I would just like to ask about the engagement piece because you mentioned engagement. And so tonight's conversation has been centered a lot on our, on our black students. There's so much information, so much data. Do we have plans to share this data with our black student achievement group or with any other groups? Or, or do we have anything planned where we have a two-way communication? I know that's an important part of our engagement.
I'll say stay tuned and, and actually not just stay tuned, tune in on October 19th because this conversation continues. The actual data reports that have been shared with you all are loaded up to the district website for those who want to go back and peruse them from previous board meetings. So tonight wasn't a new data set. It was really thinking about the data that has been provided. And there will be a conversation about practices, programs and engagement on October 19th, including two-way communication. And some of our learnings from last year, from work with the ELT, from our work with the Black Student Achievement Advisory, from staff, from others who have really done some innovative work and really are testing out new ways of being that will be shared in the next meeting. So not just stay tuned, tune in October 19th.
I like that. I like the tune in part. So thank you for that. Okay, so we will move on. And I misspoke earlier. I did not say 16.2. But now we're going to move to 17.1, which is the administrative assignment.
Thank you. And I'm passing to Dr. Simon tonight.
Well, good evening, Board of Education. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the following administrative assignment. And that is for Ms. Tanika Goodall, who is a TOSA in special education under teaching and learning to interim administrative assistant, special education, teaching and learning for the remainder of the academic year. In this role, Ms. Goodall will be responsible for assisting the director of special education, teaching and learning, Ms. Mrs. Luwano Milburn Wesley to professionally develop school teams to improve K through five CCT, which is our collaborative co-teaching programs, our MALE to moderate programs and other elementary inclusionary instructional techniques and programs. Thank you.
That requires a vote.
Yeah, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second?
Yeah, you know, okay, wasn't going to cut it. Thank you for adding the second part. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That passes four zero. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to try and get through this agenda. I have two different things I'm looking at, so I'm just going to balance them out here. Okay, so this, well, okay, 18.1. 18.1 and.
Madam Chair, can I just suggest that we go through the 18 items and that way we can see which ones are informational and which ones are action? We have the same issue again on our copies.
Right, we have two, we have two separate agendas and, okay, so.
Which one of those items is an information item and which one's an action item before we take on them?
Okay, so would you like me to read the information items first and then we do the action items or how would you like me to?
I think the first three are action and the last two are information, right?
Right, correct.
Just want to make sure because we, we do have two versions of the printed agenda again.
We do, we do. Okay, so do you want me to do one vote for the three action items?
No, I'm suggesting one at a time. I just wanted to make sure that we all knew which ones were information and which ones were action.
Okay, so I'm going to do the action items and it's going to be 18.1, 18.2 and 18.3. Those are the action items. I will need.
Mrs. Craig, can you do each of them individually? You don't have to do a roll call vote, but just do each of them individually. Great. Yes, I will.
And, and the, the verb is the, is let you know what you're doing. You're going to adopt something as opposed to acknowledge receipt of something, which is the last thing.
Well, I'll just read them and I'm going to start with 18.1. Adoption of initial bargaining proposals from the California School Employees Association or CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit A to Long Beach Unified School District.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That passes four zero. 18.2, adoption of initial bargaining proposals from the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit B to Long Beach Unified School District.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That also passes four zero. 18.3, adoption of initial bargaining proposals from the Long Beach Unified School, School District to the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter Two, Unit A and Unit B.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just one question. It's the same proposal to, to want to both units. Steve?
Some of the issues will overlap between unit and unit B, but there are some that are slightly different in terms of what we cover. But we do have to address the articles separately since both teams will be bargaining separately.
So, so you, so do you need two votes on this?
No, ours is one proposal, but it's, it's impacting, it has both unit A and unit B in the proposal.
Okay.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstention, any opposed, any abstentions? That passes four zero. So now I will move to information items. 18.4, acknowledged receipt of initial successor bargaining proposals from the Teachers Associations of Long Beach, that's TAB, K-12 and CDC Head Start to the Long Beach Unified School District. So since that was information, we don't need a motion. And 18.5, acknowledged receipt of initial bargaining proposals from the Long Beach Unified School District to the Teachers Association of Long Beach, TAB, K-12 and CDC Head Start. That's also an information item. Any questions?
And just confirming that then these are now available publicly for folks to review, right? Okay, perfect.
Yes.
For sunshining, they have to have at least a 10-day window for them to view the proposals. And just for point of clarification, I didn't pick up in the agenda typo. It says successor. But these are actually a re-opener. We finished the last successor agreement last year. So it's actually proposals for re-opener.
Okay, so that's 18.
Steve?
Say that again.
Do we need to correct that?
For, it's on the record. We should be fine because this is just the information piece, but we'll make sure it's corrected when we do the vote for next session.
So, Latisha, that will be in the minutes as, as corrected. Okay, thank you. It looks like we're at report of board members. I believe I have that correct. Okay, great. Mr. Miller, we'll start with you.
All right. It's been a full board meeting, so I will be brief. I was very, very fortunate to be invited and was able to attend the Black Student Wellness event last Monday through Zoom. And I think one of the things jokingly that I was impressed with was that it was that many people tuned in to this event outside of Monday Night Football, right? So that was very, very fortunate. But more importantly, it was my friends, my family, I recognize so many folks that were on this Zoom, folks that were also work right here in this building, that were all focused towards our most, I don't want to trivialize this more than it needs to be, but demographic that has been underperforming in this district for generations. And so I was very, very humbled at the conversations to have not only folks from all walks of life, ranging from the Long Beach Unified School District to LBCC to Cal State Long Beach. But there were moms and dads and aunties all on this call focused around the same thing, which was building a village to support these young men and young women. And so it was very, very humbling. I wanted to thank my friend, Ms. Amber Johnson, for putting on a fantastic event. We also had one of our own as one of the speakers and Ms. Alyssa Taylor Stewart. And I wanted to thank her as well for representing us good and strong. I know, yes, we had, Rachel Hamlet is there. We also had a couple of great nonprofits that are doing great work here in the city of Long Beach. It was a really, really good event. And so I just was very, very appreciative of the space and the conversation that was centered around creating a village to support these young men and young women. So it was very, very good stuff and it was a lot of the stuff that we've kind of mentioned today. So I think there's a lot of synergy going on in our city and I'm happy to see how we continue to move forward.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to start by just some reflections from, from tonight and highlighting the, the importance of the data and the presentations that we have been receiving on an ongoing basis. I want to thank my colleagues in particular for our, us being able to advance that we changed up our agendas to be more student outcomes focused and, and acknowledge and express my gratitude to Dr. Baker and the entire team for just pivoting. Literally one meeting, we started doing it and now at every meeting, right? And although it, it has taken some time for us to get our groove, right? And I'm, I'm part of the reason for that in terms of questions and, and conversation. I, I do think that it's a reflection of the analogy that Dr. Brown used today about the seeds. And, and for me, that's huge, right, as a system, given our conversations, at least in my four-plus years here around. four-plus years here, around equity. So, from afar, I'm going to anecdote your anecdote, Dr. Brown, Dr. T. Brown. From afar, our district as a field looks beautiful, looks lush, green. Once we start getting closer, we start noticing there's some patches, some dry areas. And Mr. Moskovitz, the wise, right? Do we need to water more? Do we need to pull some weeds? Do we need to plant some seeds in those areas that have not reached their full potential yet? So, the field is still there, looks beautiful, but depends on what angle you're looking at it. And we got to get close. We got to dig into the weeds, literally, not just to determine what needs to be done, but then to reap the fruits of those interventions. So, we talk about tier-one interventions. We hear from Dr. Kale about making sure that our curriculum and our texts reflect that students see themselves in that. Mr. Zaid's presentation today, that students see themselves in those classrooms, that when we talk about culturally relevant pedagogy, that's a concrete, abstract term, but concrete set of actions on what that means from a classroom perspective. So, when we talk about more accessible and inclusive classrooms, there's investments that need to be made, right? Millions of dollars to provide some furniture for our classrooms. When we talk about students being engaged, yes, that requires for adults to rethink our behavior for students to feel engaged. So, the research that our offices do here is both informed by our students themselves, but actually also by the national discourse on what we should be doing as a public education system, whether that's with our social emotional learning support, whether that's through some of our intervention, some of those conversations, Dr. Camarino, Mr. Moskovitz, Dr. Lund as well, on what does that look like from a district perspective, but what does that look like within the classroom? When we talk about one-on-one, small groups, small learning communities, shifting the sort of how we thought about teaching, right? Just the setup of our classrooms, right? And not thinking of our students as empty vessels. Folks use the banking method as an analogy, that these are, they don't show up with any gifts, talents, or knowledge. And that requires a lot, a lot, to shift an institution that has thought about our students in ways that we now think differently about our students, because we're asking them, and because, to your point, Madam Chair, we need our communities to be a part of that as well. So, I want to acknowledge that in the long run, we got a ways to go. And for folks that are looking at us inch by inch, it may not look like, it may not feel like we're making progress, but these kinds of presentations, I've only been on the board for four-plus years, we didn't get them with the frequency, intentionality, or the anchor. And that's not to say that wonderful work, because you all predate me here, just this room, well, at least not Mr. Grayson. We're digging into your wealth of knowledge as well, because I'm sure there were things that you kind of thought, you know what? If it was up to me, we'd do it differently. I'm sure all of you. But you keep rolling with it. So, I want to acknowledge the importance of not just the data, but how this data then helps for us to determine where we're planting, where we're pulling, where we're watering. So, thank you, because this data really does, contextually for me, symbolize the culture that you were referring to, Mr. Miller. So, kind of running circle, back to Lincoln Elementary School. This past Saturday, we had a Family Fun and Resource Fair there. And that's the community-building part and the community-engagement part that complements and is absolutely necessary to get us to that vision. So, big call-out, we had Student Summit this past Friday and Wednesday, Thursday and Wednesday. Incredible to see somewhere between 700 and 800 students, 750, telling us what our district should be doing, can be doing, and setting the bar high for us. So, I encourage our community members, all 37 of you that are watching tonight, of course, I'm being facetious, to utilize the spaces and to help us determine what needs to be watered, what needs to be planted, what needs to be pulled, and to hold us accountable to those things that we say. And part of that, for me, was the engagement that takes place every day in some manner at different sites in our system. But we often, just sort of at the end, in a board report, you know, talk about an event or an activity, and I want just for us to remember that all of those things are absolutely essential and to the core of this broader vision around excellence and equity. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
Yeah, well, I would echo what my colleague, Dr. Benitez, said about this. I got this agenda first a week ago, not a week ago, but five days ago on Wednesday, and I immediately looked at it all because I knew I wasn't going to have a lot of time over the weekend. And the stuff, the stuff that I thought was really important wasn't in there because it was still being accumulated. But I got it on Friday and had a chance to go through it, and I thought, boy, there's a lot of stuff here that's really going to take some time to assimilate, and it did. I go back again to the equity policy in action, the implementation areas. I'm going to try and go back to that and say, okay, we have this policy. Now, we're going to try and implement it. How are we going to implement it? This is how we're going to try and implement it, through these action steps. And I went back and I read them, and I read them, and I thought, yeah, I see that and how that relates to this. And then, when I tried to read through these reports, I was like, I'm not sure I understand this. I think I get it, but I don't, but there's, it's an enormous amount to absorb, just an enormous amount to absorb. And I think if I'm having trouble absorbing this, I wonder how people in the public, we can bring people along. As Dr. Benitez said, you've got to really, there's a communication piece. I think I've said this before at this meeting, for with 16 years on the Community College Board, we never had to do this. You know, we always pass things and talked about them, but one of the reasons for that was that there were no parents. All the students were parents, and there's nobody that came to the meetings to be concerned about this, whereas in K-12 education, kids are the most important thing, and everybody is very concerned about this. I, as you know, am a very big fan of this district and think that we're doing great things, and we're on a path. I hope that this all works out. When I was in college, I participated in an election, social psychology election experiment where my job was to count bumper stickers in three distinctly poor middle-class and upper-class neighborhoods to try and predict who was going to win. My favorite one was the guy who got to go get the water pressure tables, because they figured that these presidential elections, when the water tables went down, that meant more people were watching TV, and then you'd know whether more Republicans or more Democrats were supporting candidates. And my major, if you will, in college was kind of, how do you know these things? How do you figure, how do you get things done? And I was very skeptical of this when I started looking at it, what we're doing here, because I was trying, I didn't see the linkages and whether the data was valid and whether it was going to tell us anything. But I'm a convert. I really see that we have a path, that we're on this path, and that it creates a conversation, and it creates a conversation in real time. I remember when we first talked about when we got test results, and it was so long that I thought, eh, six months later, it, you know. And then, I remember going to my first PTA meeting, I asked the principal whether they were interested, and they said, well, a lot of the parents are talking about this iReady stuff. And I said, I don't even know what that is. But I found out about it, and I see that that's had a transformational effect on our ability to think about things moving forward. So, it's been a great learning process. It's an infinite learning process, and yet, it's the heart and soul of democracy. It really is. I mean, how do you raise people up to get into these positions and be successful? And I had a little spat with my friend Want today. I think he misunderstood what I was saying. What I was saying in essence was, I'm just older than you are, you know? I remember stuff that you don't remember.
You don't have to say it very much for me to get that piece, Mr. Otto.
Was it when I said, young man? Was that, anyway. So, I think it's been a great meeting. I think we're on a great path, and that's enough for me.
Thank you. I'll just mention a couple of things. The City of Lakewood does a celebration about quarterly, and there are different themes. Sometimes they highlight volunteers in the community, and this last Lakewood celebrates was an event to welcome new employees to the city, and that included new principals in the Lakewood schools. And so, one principal that was introduced to the community was our new principal at Hoover, Dr. David Acosta, who, it turns out, had been a Hoover, well, who had been a student teacher at Hoover. And so, now it's full circle. Now, he's principal at Hoover. I thought that was very interesting. Yeah, isn't that great? And that speaks to our community, and that is one of the things I like about Long Beach. Dr. Benitez, you mentioned the Student Summit. I also had the opportunity to visit, and first of all, it was exciting because I hadn't been on that new part of campus for Long Beach City College. And so, to see the beach volleyball area, the pool, the new buildings, really gorgeous. It looks more like a university campus. But I wanted to share some of the things that our kids shared. And so, the students had the same presentation that we had at our last workshop with things that could possibly happen in the future. And we've talked a lot about 2035. Our current kindergarteners will be graduating from high school in 2035. I mean, that's scary stuff right there. But some of the things that could possibly happen in the future would be things like holographic studying, holographic dating, which is probably safer, and if you're a dad, I'm thinking you're voting for that, right?
Note to self.
Yeah, note to self.
Like half a dad.
Yeah.
Holographic.
Yeah. Clothing, clothing that actually provides data on your health, virtual reality healthcare, that kind of thing. And so, I watched as the kids filtered in, they saw this presentation, and then they were asked to share their ideas on things. They were asked to share how they are prepared for the future, how they feel unprepared for the future, what kind of skills you're going to need, that kind of thing. So, I want to share with you some of the things. On the kind of positive side, how do you feel prepared? They expressed excitement, like, I'm prepared because I'm open-minded. Technology is slowly advancing, so we're going to be involved in the changes. I thought that was pretty exciting. And I'm eager to adapt to new things. Now, on the other side of things, how are they unprepared, maybe? They expressed a little fear, and I have to say, I kind of agreed with what they said. AI, artificial intelligence, is taking over people's jobs. That's a fear. That's valid. And somebody else was afraid of how fast the world is moving, and sometimes that can be scary. And one student said, I'm not prepared to get rid of personal or physical interactions. And so, when we're talking about more technology, like with virtual reality healthcare, we're losing those interpersonal relationships. And so, another question was, what do they need? And so, some of those answers were, we need more work-based learning and activities for future jobs. That's how we can prepare our kids. They need a skill set like maturity, a growth mindset, to be brave. I thought that was a good one. Financial literacy. They want to be prepared for the future for their own personal, financial reasons. And also, one of my favorites was, don't listen to hate. So, I think we're on the right track when we're listening to our students, and they definitely shape the work that we do in the best way. So, Superintendent's Report.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Okay, announcements. Okay, I just want to thank everybody for hanging in there, sticking it out. We've had a lot of information tonight. It's been a wonderful evening. Thanks for sharing it with us. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, someone--
Great. Thank you, everyone.